Projects at the water sites, wastewater plant, storm pump stations. Our maintenance department has been working on cleanup after this storm. We had tumbleweeds littered everywhere throughout the town, people's yards, businesses. We had a downed light pole, broken branches littered throughout the street. So, street sweeper was pretty busy and staff was pretty busy cleaning up. Also wanted an update council on well 16, the TCP project. Well 16 was taken out of service yesterday, February 1st, and is anticipated to be down for six weeks. Contractor needs to work on the bowl there to increase production and also start building our chemical room. That's the end of the report. If you're happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, sir. Council questions? Jose?
Actually, I do. All right, just real quick, Anthony, I did get a call from a resident in regards to those dispensers for the dog waste bags at Sing Park. Is that something that we have at most of our parks currently or only on a field one? And possibly to, you know?
Yeah, we do have, Mr. Moran, we do have most of our parks equipped with dogs' waste stations. The only ones we do not have waste stations are Luceto Park, Sing Park, Memorial, we don't have one at Memorial. Or the landscape area on Winton Parkway. We do have them at Joseph Gallo at the park where the residence walk. We do have them at the rest of the parks, like Max Foster, Don Myers, Frederick Wardin, the landscape area on Hammett. We're starting to install quite a bit because we're seeing a lot more residents starting to walk their dogs and we want to encourage them to pick up after their pets because our residents do walk that area as well and it's very unsightly and unsanitary.
So, Councilmember Moran, so having said that Anthony is projecting and putting in a dog waste stations at Sing Park and where else, Anthony?
Memorial.
Yes.
Luceto Park. And that will complete our parks, at least all our parks will be equipped, but also we'll put some at the Winton Parkway landscape area because that's well-traveled by our residents and our dog walkers as well.
Sorry, also like Robin, the landscape area on Robin?
Yeah, we got them there too.
Okay, cool.
We just put those up, I think, last year, so they're pretty new.
Thank you, Anthony, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Moran, you have any questions? Raul, Mayor Potem Garcia, any questions? Comments?
Negative.
Thank you, sir. For me, Anthony, do we have an update on the project, sidewalk project, probably in the initial stages regarding over there on Dwight and Walnut?
Yeah, so currently, Engineering Department is working on the design specifications for that CMAC project. They're about 30%, 40% finished with design. We're still waiting to get some more feedback from them, but right now they're trying to figure out the alignments, how far out, whether we're going to have parking along the side, whether we're going to have to relocate some of the light poles. So Engineering is still working on that design.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from other departments or the public?
Just one thing, Anthony, I really appreciate you phoning and reaching out to me this morning and letting me know that the military banner was found, whoever placed it in a very conspicuous area so that can be found. Truly appreciate it. All 12 banners are accounted for as well as the military flag banners. So again, I'm super happy about that. Also, in regards to your April 17 cleanup, again, just to reiterate how the county did it and throughout the other cities, having a cleanup is, gives us a chance to, our residents to place items that are too bulky and if we have them frequently, and I know there's a cost to it, but again, Mr. Councilmember Moran had said earlier in regards to city having to clean that up, I know a while back that I had posted up on Facebook that I was really upset that residents had dumped a lot of trash out into our country roads. That cost does not come out of our city funds, that goes directly to our farmers that have to clean that up. So that is a very costly and burdensome expense on our farmers. So, and that, to me, I know that our farmers don't dump on farmers, it's our residents going out there and dumping on our farmers. So I appreciate the fact that we're going to have a cleanup here in April so as we can get that widespread so that our residents have someplace to dispose of their large waste and perhaps e-waste.
And it's been great so far, we've had a lot of participation from our residents. We always fill our tire containers, they come out of the woodworks. The box springs are getting fairly popular too in the mattresses, they've been coming out. This year I encourage our residents to come out and get rid of their e-waste as well.
If you're not speaking, please mute your phones, we cannot hear.
So I encourage our residents to, just to come out and utilize our services, get rid of your tires, your e-waste, and your mattresses, April 17th. And be looking out for a flyer, city will be mailing a flyer to all our residents. It'll be on social media as well and the electronic board.
Thank you, sir.
As well and electronic board.
Can you please mute your phones, these people in attendance via phone, can you please silence or mute your phones? Thank you.
Mayor, in reference to Councilwoman Soto, one of the things in anticipation of our solid waste contract that's going to be expiring December of 2022, one of the things that we can look at is having either a one or two, you know, a year cleanup days where residents can, we haven't had it here in Livingston in the past, but of course you guys have seen it in other communities where they basically put all their debris in the front and, you know, they schedule cleanup through neighborhoods, you know, over the course of one week or two weeks. That way, you know, residents can really clean up, you know, their backyards and, you know, front yards, et cetera. So that's something that we're going to look and of course it's all going to come down to cost and the utility stakeholders will look at all of that and then of course there will be recommendations. But we anticipate having an RFP at the very beginning of 2022 so that we can, you know, have some leverage and be able to find the best waste handler for the best price so that we can at least have either one or two of those massive cleanup days a year.
Thank you, Jose. Yeah, absolutely, I think we should definitely advocate and try to do that. I think that'd be a great benefit for our city, but also like Councilwoman Soto stated, for farmers, so people, prevent people from dumping garbage out. Another quick thing, I also received a call from one of our residents here in town regarding the Gallo Park. So there's no lights out there, obviously, right? So that, they were advocating and I'd like to advocate and for us to look into possibility of putting at least one light out there. I guess they were out a little late, later in the day, it was getting dark and he was almost mugged. Some individuals approached them and pulled some sort of weapon or something like that. I don't want to scare anybody, but I mean, that's what the call I received. So we could, you know, look into, I know it gets very dark out there and some people obviously, you know, you know, this is a working community, get off of work later in the day and they want to walk and, you know, it's a beautiful park and good walkways. So we could really look into putting a light out there or multiple lights, whatever the case may be. And PD, chief, if you could tell your guys to keep an eye out there and, you know, from time to time just patrol through there, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you want to come up to the mic?
I'm sure you're aware though that we do get two times, two pickups per year that we just call in and take off our trash to the front. I don't know if you want to promote that or mention that, but we do have that.
Yeah, that's correct. And then you just contact the utility, the garbage disposal and arrange, you can set up an appointment and they'll come and pick up your bulky items. Absolutely, that's correct. And you're right, it's twice calendar year, I believe, that you're able to do that by appointment.
Thank you for bringing that up. Any other departments representing today or have any information? No?
I had a question.
Go ahead and state your name, please.
Pamela Temez, 1724 D Street. I had a question for Public Works.
Go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering if they could come out to the road alley behind my home. There's a tree, a huge tree that's grown in the alley and it's grown into my fence and I was wondering if they could just come out and look at it. It's grown into the electrical wires and the telephone wires. It's a really big tree, but it's invading the fence area and it's in the, it's in the actual alley roadway. I've called before and they came out to look at it, but I don't know what became of that. I wasn't informed of anything when it was looked at, when I did call before. It was several months back, but we're kind of concerned because it's getting bigger and bigger. And we were hoping maybe you could just come out and assess it, just look at it.
Sure. Can you provide your address or do you want to call Public Works tomorrow if you don't want to give out your address?
Yeah, 1724 D Street.
1724?
And it's right behind in the alley.
B as in dog?
Oh, D.
Yeah.
Okay, ma'am, we'll inspect tomorrow.
Okay, I'm just concerned because when the summer comes, you know, it's hitting the electrical wires and, and thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, guys, let's move on to city manager announcements and reports.
Yes, Honorable Mayor of Council and public, I have a few things. One, I just wanted to let council know that we are continuing to stay focused and this year is going to be the year where the ACE train decision is going to be made. As you all know, we're in direct competition with our friendly neighbor, Atwater. So I'm sure everybody's aware of all the great things that we've been doing to position ourselves to be able to land the ACE train here and with the help of our supervisor and business community and the council. So I anticipate that we're going to hear something from the ACE train probably, you know, around the April timeframe. You know, sometimes what happens during the, you know, because of the pandemic and stuff, they might push it off a month or two, but what I want everybody to do is certainly talk to the different elected leaders as part of the, as you know, our representative on the San Joaquin Valley, rail authority is our supervisor, and let some of his colleagues know, hey, why Livingston should be the place. So just put that on your radar. We're planning on having a Zoom meeting with representatives from ACE train in the next few weeks just to, again, let them know that we're here, what we're doing and hear from them in terms of timeframes. The other thing that I wanted to chat a little bit, as you all know, that visionary housing is part of the 35 acres that are going to be master planned over here behind Ranch San Miguel in front of the health clinic. Five acres of the, a little less than five acres have been carved out for visionary housing and they're moving ahead with their project and they're going to go a little quicker than the master planning in the gallows and so that's okay, that's good, we'll still tie them in. So they're moving forward. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, I know I see Mr. Castillo here in the audience and his project, his multifamily project off of Hammett and I'm sure he can chat a little bit about that, but excited about the different makeup of the projects, you know, three bedrooms, two bath, you know, two bedrooms and two baths and so forth, or one and a half bath. So looking forward to that. And then I'm sure a lot of people are going to be happy when that old wellhead and site that's in the corner there is gone and that old little home in the corner is gone and beautified and some type of welcome sign to Livingston off of Hammett. So, thank you, Mr. Castillo. The other thing I want is, staff continually is working on a COVID-19 prevention plan and so we constantly have to update it because as you know, it's an ongoing revolving item and so we updated it again and we're currently circulating it through bargaining groups and also our employees, so keeping that moving forward. And then lastly, the, there's an assembly bill, it's Assembly Bill 252 and this one is currently, I think they probably heard their first hearing, I think it was today or yesterday. But anyways, to make a long story short, this is to get some funding for parks, for storm water, or anything related to water. And if that goes through, that certainly will be a big benefit for, you know, communities all over the state. So again, it's Assembly Bill 252 and unless you have any questions for me, that's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Council, any questions for Jose? Councilmember Moran?
Is that for questions or for report?
No, questions for the city manager.
No questions.
No, you have any questions for the city manager? No? Okay. Any questions, Mayor Potem Garcia?
Negative.
Okay, for me, Jose, just a couple, if you could just give us an update regarding the priority workshop, are we still scheduling that, is it coming up?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor. So for the public, thank you for reminding me, Mayor. And then again, this is open to all of the public, we've had lots and lots of participation, you know, dating back to 2011 in these vision and goal-setting workshops. So we have one scheduled for February 17th and it's going to be a combination of a few people here, but the majority can certainly participate through Zoom. And the idea is to, you know, interact with the public and the commissioners, city council, those folks that are in the utility stakeholders, different ad hoc committees, recreation, schools, you name it. It's open to everybody to participate and the whole idea is, again, look forward and see where we want to take Livingston and some priorities and bring, you know, good ideas like you've done in the past so that we have some goals that we can shoot for and make this community better. So again, if you want more information, certainly contact our office, but it's going to be February 17th at 6 o'clock and we'll have an agenda packet and a Zoom link and a phone link and then of course some limited seating in here. And we'll have a professional consultant that will be helping us.
Thank you, Jose. Any other updates regarding the other apartment complex or project on Main Street? Do you have any updates on?
Okay, all right, I'm sure you're probably referencing the 480 unit proposed housing development? Okay, so we've already received, just recently, we received the full EIR docket related to that project. Just a little bit of background, they had completed their environmental several months back, but because there was a Swanson Hawk issue that was brought up as part of some special meetings that we had and conversations, we communicated to the developer that it was important for them, you know, we gave them some direction and they went ahead and decided that they wanted to basically complete a full EIR and see if council would look at having a statement of overriding consideration looked at once we received the full EIR and the docket. So we have already received that, staff is currently reviewing all those and so we should be having something come before council, maybe as early as this next council meeting that's scheduled, I think it's on the 15th of February or 16th, 16th, I think.
Perfect, thank you. Now we're moving on to city council members announcements and reports. Councilmember Moran?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I would like to offer my sincere condolences to residents in our communities who have lost loved ones and to my family as well who... Since we also have lost another family member to the virus. Secondly, I did participate in the police force training simulator invitation by the chief sometime like almost two weeks ago and I did receive the high score from the training from the three of us that participated that day, including...
Sure, making that up.
I'm sure that the chief won't let me lie, so...
Are you very sure?
So that was fun, I really, that was something different, you know, and I really appreciated the invitation, so, you know, kind of getting a little bit of a taste to see, you know, some of the training that your guys go through. Appreciate it, thank you, that was fun. And if you, you know, I'm more than willing for another round whenever they come back.
I had one more item, Mayor, that I forgot to mention and thank you for the reminder. So I just wanted to sincerely extend my condolences to the Kang family for the loss of their father and prayers and thoughts are with them, thank you.
Thank you. So Councilmember Moran, anything else?
Yes, thank you. And I also attended the Arts Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. That was the first time as the official council liaison to the commission. Thank you to the commissioners and to Jackie for a great job you guys are doing, especially with all the work that you're doing right now to, with all the long-term plans for the parks in the city. I also met, within the last week or so, I had an opportunity to meet with all of the department heads, including Public Works, Recreation, Finance, Planning, and I learned more about all of the work and the responsibilities. There's a lot of work that they do behind the scenes that, you know, I wasn't aware of and I'm still, actually tomorrow, I think tomorrow I'm scheduled to meet with the chief and have coffee and donuts, so...
I didn't know you were bringing donuts.
And, you know, I also been receiving a lot of information and a lot of calls about, you know, the low number of vaccines, what can we do as a city and, you know, probably the same thing, you know, like the supervisor was mentioning. And, you know, once again, then we get to refer them to the county, to the website. So there's a lot of interest out there. And also participated in a webinar and received some information in regards to SB 1383, which we need to work on in the future as a city. Also received some information from the Mercer College 2020 annual report and all the great things that they're doing, which I will share with the community a little bit later. I also attended some of the webinars during the New Majors and Council Members Academy, which was provided by the League of California Cities. In addition, I also made some time to view the recorded webinars that I was not able to attend. I highly recommend to the rest of the council and use this opportunity to refresh on some of the various important topics that were discussed during the academy, including some of the topics were relationship between city council and city management, financial responsibilities, revenues, policy role in land use, planning and, you know, and so many other ones. So I do have the links if anybody else is interested. And just an announcement and an invitation for this coming Saturday, we're going to have a Saturday road cleanup from 8 to 11 in the morning at the intersection of Main Street and Campbell Boulevard. And this was thanks to a resident that reached out and, I mean, you know, and the only thing left for us to do is to really support the community and help with their support, keeping our city cleaned. And so we're looking for more volunteers, I know that we have some schools that are volunteering, some of their kids are coming out. So anybody out in the community that wants to volunteer and come out and have some, get some vitamin D for three hours, you're more than welcome. So this is going to be in the intersection of Main Street and Campbell Boulevard. We're going to provide, you know, the large trash bags and disposable gloves and thanks to the police department and Public Works for their support and assistance, so, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Quick question, is that a city-sponsored event? Are we using city resources for that?
No, well, that is a community-driven event, but I did reach out to city manager to, one, to make sure if there was any permits or anything that we needed it to obtain and city manager did offer to provide the trash bags and to help with this and support of the event.
So the city is sponsoring the event with the resources?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just want to get clarification and it's what corner, B and Campbell or Main and Campbell?
Main and Campbell.
Not the private property area or which one?
So let me bring a little bit of background to that. So independent of Mr. Moran, we had been in conversations with Mr. Escobedo because there's been some homeless encampments in that area, there's been a lot of accumulation of debris and trash. And so we've been going back and forth to Mr. Escobedo about, you know, the issue there and, and so it's like, you know, how do we enforce it on one end and then, and then we communicated to him that he needed to clean it all up and, and so we worked with him on trying to address that issue. And then subsequently, Mr. Moran had sent an email message and said that they were planning some type of cleanup. So I, in my communication, I basically said, look, this is the issue, Mr. Escobedo offered to clean up his area and that, by the way, that whole strip, and I communicated, Mr. Moran, that all of that strip, all those strips in there have actually been purchased by neighboring business owners and that it's no longer Caltrans right of way. It's never belonged to the city, it's always been Caltrans, but it's been a challenge to get Caltrans to clean that area. And so now that those parcels have actually been sold, they are private property. And so the only, and so I said we could not help any other way other than to provide some trash bags to help clean up the community. So that's the impetus of this project.
Thank you, Jose, for the clarification. Councilmember Soto?
I attended the use of force simulator training as well and I beg to differ, Councilmember Moran, I was dubbed Annie Oakley, so I think I deserve donuts and coffee with chief over I also attended the Parks and Rec Commission meeting where four young ladies in our community that have been introduced as a Miss Independence Court, they came and informed the commission that they are available for events and the city as a matter of promoting events and providing community service as they do for our local VFW. Also, I just have a few roundtables and meetings that I will be attending sponsored by the California League of Cities and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. California League of Cities and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, so I'll report on those the next meeting. I also see that we have Julio in the audience, I was going to mention something about the Livingston Fourth of July Committee, but since he's here, I'll let him speak on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pratam Garcia, anything to report?
Yes, I just want to let the public know that last co, today, or this month's meeting and March's meeting has been canceled, so I won't have any report until then. Bye, bye.
Thank you. In regards to myself, I have a few things to report. First of all, I did also attend the Use of Force Training, thank you chief for invitation, and I was the one that got the highest score, but that's fine, they could, they could claim whatever they want to claim, it's all good. And then, also been meeting with the department heads, meeting with community partners just to advocate for a good partnership and collaboration between everybody, was able, like I mentioned earlier, meet with Leslie from Livingston Health, Livingston Community Health, you know, and hopefully good partnership, a good collaboration continues with them. Like was mentioned earlier, there's been obviously a lack of vaccines available to our, you know, for our community and our county, was able to also sign a letter with the different county mayors, all the, all the mayors from the cities and the county, advocating for, for more vaccines for most vulnerable population and those in need, so definitely advocating for that. Let me see, another, I attended the MCAG meeting, was new director in place, April Hugh, from Dos Palos. There's also going to be coming up a landfill gas to energy project workshop through MCAG on Wednesday, the 10th, I'll be planning on attending. And then another, so another section I want to also address and talk about is the obvious recent complaints brought forth to our council two meetings ago, so I wanted to take this time and really talk, speak to that, and what the city's actions have been, and like we had mentioned, we take every allegation seriously, so we just want to, like I said, talk about it, I wrote down with the help of our attorney's office, some points of discussion or points of I want to bring up. First of all, I want to thank the JT Mann and his family for having the courage and coming forth to our council, I know it's be difficult to bring such allegations up in public, so we, we definitely encourage that from everybody, anybody in the public in our town to, whenever there's any concerns, come forth and trust us. Like I mentioned many times, not only here, but in my social media, we don't condone such disrespect or vulgar language or behavior towards anybody, especially from, you know, our council and as the mayor. And we encourage, like I said, all members of the public to come forth if there's any concerns with anybody up here, not only as elected officials, but also any department heads or anybody representing the city of Livingston. We definitely took everything that was said in consideration, you know, and I felt that it was urgency to act as soon as possible. We took immediate action, we, you know, immediately adopted the Code of Conduct the next following meeting, the, you know, immediately directed the city attorney's office to look into allegations raised by Mr. Mann. Like we had mentioned, the Code of Conduct clearly aligns the clear expectations and standards that each member of the council must hold themselves and our fellow council members to going forward. I don't know if you guys read the recent article at the Sunstar, once a complaint was brought to attention of the chief of police in November, the chief, the city manager and the attorney, they all, they was all, they all took appropriate action, immediate action, and like I mentioned, it was back in November. The chief consulted with the district attorney from the county, who concluded that based upon the allegations raised by Mr. Mann, there was no criminal actions, actions that took place. The professional evaluation of the complaint by the chief of police and the deputy district attorney both concluded that no criminal activity or violation had occurred, and therefore there was no legal basis to conduct a further criminal investigation. Based on the meeting between Mr. Mann and the chief in November, where Mr. Mann was informed of the conclusion of chief, of the, of the chief of police and district attorney's office, the chief of police believed the matter to be resolved, and that was back in November. And then again, after Mr. Mann's public comments were made on January 5th, raising the allegations, the city took immediate action, Code of Conduct was passed. And additionally, the city attorney's office has committed to remaining open and available to receive facts regarding the allegations raised by Mr. Mann. Attorney's office is obviously happy to speak with any member of the public via phone, email, text, any, any way of communication regarding the allegations brought forth on January 5th. I believe that the council has taken positive steps in over the past month to create a positive and collaborative environment. I think it is clear from our actions that the council is focused on inclusivity and bringing positive change for the city of Livingston its residents. And then I'm going to go, I know it's lengthy, but it's very important that I cover this. Here's the timeline of kind of what we received and regarding dates and times. On November 6th, our chief, Soria, received a complaint letter from JT Mann detailing alleged comments made by council member Kang regarding his father, Major Mann, JT Mann, and Kushi Mann, which is wife. On November 10th, 2020, at the direction of the city manager and city attorney, chief Soria called the district attorney's office, Matthew Serrato, Merced County District Attorney's Office, to discuss the facts presented by Mr. Mann. The DA informed chief Soria that there was no legal basis to bring criminal charges against council member Kang regarding the alleged comments. On November 11th, our chief Soria spoke to Mr. Mann to discuss the letter and the actions the chief had taken thus far. Chief Soria informed Mr. Mann that it was his opinion and the opinion of Mr. Serrato that the council member Kang had not broken any laws. During this conversation, the chief noted that Mr. Mann informed him that Mr. Mann considered the matter closed and did not wish to pursue any further actions against council member Kang. Moving forward to January 5th, obviously the allegations were brought to our council and publicly. The 7th, our office consulted with our firms, or the office, attorney's office consulted with firms labor and employment practice group regarding the allegations and complaints made by Mr. Mann. Based upon those conversations, it was determined to gather more facts from Mr. Mann to discover whether a formal investigation will be required. On the 11th, our attorney's office interviewed the chief, obviously gathered all what had transpired, you know, in regards to what information he had received, and that, you know, the chief thought that this matter had been resolved, and it had been documented on 11/16/2020 from an email from Mr. Soria, or chief Soria to the city manager, or to the city manager and attorney. Our chief also stated that he had no, not heard from Mr. Mann after their 11, November 11th conversation. On January 13th of this year, our attorneys conducted an interview with Mr. Mann regarding his comments. During this interview, Mr. Mann, with Mr. Mann without naming any individuals or projects or businesses or developers, originally providing more details, it was difficult for attorney's office to take any action. There was no details, no specific names where we could reach or follow up or anything like that. Mr. Mann, you know, didn't provide those further specifics, but stated he will see if any of the individuals will come forward and speak. Our attorneys also offered an opportunity for them to remain anonymous, but provide further, further details and facts regarding those allegations. On the 15th, the city manager forwarded some text messages shared by a Livingston resident, which depicted vulgar and explicit language used by both the resident and the council member, and the conversation between them. The conversation appears to be from September 20th, there was no context to them from the messages shared, nothing contained any information or anything that would indicate any criminal activity or violation or anything like that. On the 19th, obviously the city council adopts the Code of Conduct between the city council members and appointed public officials. On the 20th, there was a follow-up email to Mr. Mann seeking further facts or details, and no response has been received to this date. I believe, Mr. Trevor, to be, that's pretty much the information you have, also collaborated with me in regards to what happened, kind of the timeline and the communication you had with Mr. Mann, Mr. JT, in regards to your office, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So I just want to, you know, I know it was lengthy and there's a lot of information, but I just want to assure that the city council did take this matter seriously. This matter was, like I stated on the, on the timeline, that it was originally brought forth back in November, you know, I believe that the, our city manager, the attorney's office, and police chief acted appropriately by, you know, taking immediate action to it and, you know, seeking advice from the DA's office and, and doing what they, you know, supposed to be doing, so I have full faith in what they did, and, and then to move forward to the current allegations, you know, we definitely acted immediately, you know, we definitely had the attorney's office look into these matters, try to find more details, more witnesses, whatever the case may be. Unfortunately, we, or fortunately, whatever you want to say or call it, we didn't receive any further information or details, nobody to contact, call, verify, and so basically that's where we're at. Like we, like I mentioned, we definitely have the door open, if there's any other details, any other information, you know, we're, we're happy to sit down and talk and, you know, look further, further, but ultimately, regardless, you know, like I mentioned, we don't, we don't condone such behavior, whether it happened or not, regardless, our responsibility as elected officials is to be respectful and, you know, behave to our best at all times and with anybody here in town and elsewhere. I think like the conduct, the Code of Conduct was very strong and really will hold us accountable with each other in regards to making sure we, we are respectful and, and don't condone such behavior, so that's, maybe you guys have any further questions, feel free to reach out to myself, our city manager, our attorney's office, and we'll go from there. But it was very important that we at least gave an update publicly and assured that we have definitely looked into this matter, you know, did our thorough assessment of the situation, and, and we just didn't ignore it or pushed it off or, or whatever the case may be. Thank you. And that's it for my report, and now we're going to move to citizens' comments. The section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council or any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes, in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the city council as each item is brought up for discussion.
Yes, Jason Ross, 1829th First Court?
Go ahead.
Yep, I just got a question, the house on Second and Peach, is the owner aware of how much of an eyesore that is? The garage is coming down, the windows are broken, who knows if there's homeless living in there, I mean, possible meth lab going on in there, who knows? Are they aware of that? And then secondly, whoever the community member was about Joseph Gallow Park, thank you. My wife and I walk our dogs there nightly, and it is kind of dark down there, a lot of kids down there drinking and smoking marijuana, so I think that's a big issue that needs to be resolved, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, definitely, Jose, you want to mention?
Yes, thank you very much for those comments. Yeah, we actually have, we've had several of those homes around town, a couple of them actually, that we've actually used a special, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, receivership mechanism in order to, you know, fix those homes and address them. And so the other ones that are out there, we're trying to work with the property owners and the banks to try to address them, because yes, absolutely, I mean, there's, there's debris, there's broken windows, who knows, there might even be some, you know, individuals in there. So we're keeping an eye on those, those are on our radar, and besides being unsightly, and they're also unsafe, and we're, we're trying to tackle them as best we can. And one of the reasons is if we try to tackle those on our, as a city, as a receivership, it requires quite a bit of funding on the city side, we have to expend all that money first, before we can look at recuperating. So we're trying all the different mechanisms, and I thank the public for bringing it back to our radar.
Anybody else on the phone?
Jim Sanders, Merced, California.
Thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm usually the guy in the back of the room running your video, but, and following on the presentation by your health director earlier in the meeting, I wanted to give you a little up-close-and-personal experience I had as a person that got the virus. On the 21st of January, after experiencing for several days severe trouble breathing, I was admitted to Mercy, Merced Hospital and tested positive for the virus. I was given the, kind of the President Trump treatment, I got remdesivir, monoclonal antibodies, antibiotics, and whatever else they had under the kitchen sink, and I was very fortunate. If you're a religious person, you might say I was blessed, if you're not, I'm very lucky. I was out of the hospital in a day and a half, we're 10 days, 11 days down the road now, and I'm completely recovered. And I just wanted to make you aware of this, even though the hospital I went to isn't in Livingston, I don't, I do not believe I was exposed to any of the council meetings that I was at, but I wanted to shout out to the, the hospital folks, the staff is incredible, they're overworked, yet I got, and everybody in there was getting the top-notch care from these folks. A lot of times it's easy to criticize our public agencies, especially hospitals and our medical care, but I just wanted to say thank you to them. I want to thank the city staff for arranging to have people step in for me while I was recovering, and I hope to see you all at the next council meeting. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments, and I'm glad that you're at home recovering and doing better, so I'm glad that, that we're, definitely you're doing good. Any other public comment in regards from public on the phone? Okay, I don't hear any public comment here. Mr. Espinoza?
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate, hopefully my best to, and hopefully recovers soon as Jim Sanders stated. Yeah, thank God, you know, I, I guess they gave me the long dose of remdesivir, maybe stayed there for five days, I've just, just that plus an extra two days, so, but I'm glad I'm, you know, we recovered as well. I wanted to just say a little bit, on Saturday, I will be helping out in Merced after 10:00, so in the morning I can probably come over and, and help support the cleanup as well here in Livingston, and I'll be glad to provide some donuts, I'll be glad to invite the chief as well. To talk about the ACE train, you know, I've been pushing for that as much as I can for the ACE train, so we can land a stop station here in, in Livingston, but also too, I would like to ask the city manager and maybe the mayor or whoever it wants to be from the council, you know, I would advise to call all the directors of the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, I think individually, I think that was, that would be, that would help. I think individually, I think that was, that would be, that would help. Last meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, I was made the second vice chair, so in two years, I'll be the chairman of the board of the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, but I know that Vito Quiessa is very supportive, hopefully, you know, that you guys can convince the rest, you know, whatever we can do, call the rest of the electors, Adam Gray and Ana Caballero to support as well, and plus the businesses that we'd be supporting, and they want the ACE train here in Livingston. Regarding the trash in the county that drops, you know, just even my ranches in Delhi, we've gotten trash, you know, probably every week and every month, you know, and who knows how many years, and, you know, just anywhere around the county, it's the same thing, other counties, Stanlos County, or wherever you go, it's the same thing, that people don't want to pay to, you know, dump the trash at, you know, the landfill, but it's just, I just encourage people to, you know, if they have their phone, take pictures, take video of whoever dumping garbage, you know, because I know most of it probably goes in the evenings and people don't see it, but in the county, if somebody drops garbage on the side of the road next to a farmer, the farmer, if it's inside the orchard, they can just pull it out next to the road and call me, call the County Public Works, and they usually pick it up, it might take a couple of days, but they usually pick it up for free, you know, and all the county has to bear all that, you know, weight of somebody and picking it up, but here in the city, I know that the city, you know, they do the same thing. So, regarding tables at the park, I know that Joseph Gallow Park, the city put some cement, and I was asked by the residents, they're the senior citizens, that they would like another table, because I know that, you know, I addressed some of the citizens there that sit too tightly together, about 20 of them, I said, hey, stay apart, stay apart, you don't want to get the virus if anybody has it, you know, so just with that support, I think that, you know, if we put more tables, in a couple of more tables in the park, I think that would, that would help us as well. And next week, we'll have our third board meeting in a row, so we had two meetings for January, and that'll be our second meeting for February as well, so February 9th, it will be our next board meeting until, and then until March then. So, with that, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Just real quick, in regards to advocating for the ACE train, I know our City Manager had provided us with the directors' phone numbers or contact information for us to advocate, I don't know if it was during last year at some point, but maybe went and forwarded to us again, I know there's new council member, but now, definitely need to advocate and make contact and send the email and all that good stuff.
Yeah, you know, I know Jose probably has Dan Levis' information, or I can ask him to send me all the emails and all the new phone numbers, because we got new board members that came up along too. We got a new board chairman from Bay Area, so we'll get that, okay? Thank you.
Awesome, sounds good, thank you. Any other public comment?
Diego Castillo, just question, is there anything that the residents of Livingston or the businesses can do to increase the odds of us landing a spot for the ACE train?
Great question, the answer is yes. Any letter of support would certainly help, it can be short, it can be long, and on your business letterhead will certainly go a long way. We've had, you know, support from Foster Farms, from the Gallows, and others, so yes, everybody, it all helps.
Is that, if I may, real quick, is that, I mean, I don't know, is it possible to add, like, the information on people that are willing to send letters in support, like, how to, where to, like, is that something that can be added to the website?
Go ahead, sir.
Hello, Julio Valades. So, by the way, I am part of the San Joaquin Valley Real Commission as well. Our next meeting is March 5th, so that's when we'll be reviewing some things, but I am part of that. I did have another couple things, two other things, well, the, I was just wondering if the council is going to get ethics training as well? Is that something that you guys are looking into, the City Council members and?
You want a response right now, Trevor, I think you could, go ahead and?
Yeah, absolutely, that's something we're working on scheduling for the council, and I believe we're hoping to have it over two sessions.
Awesome. The other, the actual reason that I'm also here for is I just want to throw out there that we are looking into bringing the Fourth of July Festival this year. Prelimarily, if things improve, there's three options that we're looking into, one is the normal three-day festival. A lot of people always say, why three days? And I'm going to clear that up quickly, is the three days are needed in order to pay for everything, because the Carnival Company will not come for two days or one day. It's not worth it for them to pay everyone to set up equipment and all that for one or two days. And it also helps us because the three days brings more money, the Carnival Company brings in from 30 to almost $40,000 back. So, that is the reason why three days. So, the other options, though, are we just raise money locally or somehow and do a one-day event with entertainment and vendors, or we just do a fireworks show. So, those are the things that we're looking into. The two last options, we'd really have to raise some money from the community businesses and so on to get it done, because without doing a regular three-day event where we can bring in some revenue, then it'll be hard to raise that money. Lastly, I think a lot of us should, maybe, it's my opinion, just, you know, bring out the, or just plain out and say if we've had COVID or not, I don't know if that helps people or doesn't help people, but I've had COVID, and I was blessed enough that I had no symptoms at all. So, didn't feel anything, the only reason I knew is because someone else in my family had it and we all got tested. So, I think a lot of us can get over it, and hopefully, this is over soon, and we can actually have a big festival to celebrate not only the, our independence from the COVID, but also our regular Independence Day. Thank you all.
Thank you for that up there, appreciate it. And I know you guys reached out on social media to get a public opinion in regards of the three options, correct? So, I appreciate that. Any other public comment? Obviously not. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the City Manager or City Council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council or City Manager request that specific items be removed. We have four items on the consent agenda. Approval warrant registered dated January 28th, approval of minutes of meeting held on November 17th, approval of minutes of meeting held on December 15th, resolution appointing Mr. Trevor Tenaguchi as City Attorney and approving First Amendment to the professional service agreement with the law firm of Mayors Nave and Riback Silver and Wilson. Counsel, any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Soto, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Moran, Monica?
Yes.
Yes.
If you're asking for a vote, I can't hear you.
Mayor Protim Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved, a vote of 4-0.
Okay, now, we're moving on to discussion and potential, yeah, go ahead.
That was the vote on all the, all the 1 through 4, right?
What was that again?
That was the vote on the consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Well, if I may, I just want to thank Jose Sanchez, who we served us for about the last 10 years, he's done an exceptional job, you know, not just him, but the, you know, all the firm. And I know, Trevor, you're coming in, just if you can let Jose Sanchez know my appreciation, Rodrigo Espinoza, you know, we were, we had Mayors Nave and him for most of my years that I was here, and I just want to express all my deep appreciation for the firm. If we, by the council, if we can have a plaque of thank you for Jose Sanchez, and appreciation for all his 10 years here with the city, I would appreciate that too.
Yeah, we're already working on that, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to discussion and potential action items. Item number six, resolution authorizing the City of Livingston to submit a funding application to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District for two new hybrid electric patrol vehicles.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public, Chief Soria. Tonight, I have for you a resolution, hoping that the council can adopt, can adopt tonight, authorizing the City of Livingston to submit funding application to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. What this is, is we have to have this resolution adopted first before we can actually go through with the grant to help us with funding on two new vehicles, two 2021 Ford Interceptors that I believe have already been budgeted. And I want to thank Janice Soria for doing the, doing the grant writing and the resolution to actually, hopefully, we can get this passed tonight, that will help the city instead of having to pay actually 85,000, it would drop it down to like 45 and some change, with $20,000 going towards each vehicle. I don't know if you know that it's been since 2016 that we actually had a new vehicle, our vehicles are getting up there in mileage, so this is something that's very much needed. So, if you have any questions regarding the equipment or any of the financing, please ask.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Moran? Councilmember Soto? Mayor Protim Garcia, any questions?
Negative.
Okay, so, I'm going to have, open it up for the public, any questions for the Police Chief regarding this item? I don't hear any, bring it back to council, any further discussion or any motions, council?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Protim Garcia, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Moran, Monica?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved, a vote of 4-0.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to item number seven, discussion on utility rate study timeline.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public, city staff, Vanessa Portejo, Finance Director. We have an informational item for you tonight regarding the timeline for the rate study. There's no, there's no action on this item other than providing this visual for the council and for our citizens, so they can have some sort of a roadmap of what's going to be taking place with our rate study coming forward. Just a little bit of background, and on November 17, we had the, we brought in a report in order to continue the rate study project. It was approved at that point to have an amendment with the existing consultant, Hans for Economics. Since the rate study, we, we had already done a significant work on presenting and gathering the information, gathering the data to make up or present a five-year rate study to the council, and with, with the pandemic and everything else that took place, we had to postpone the efforts that we had put forward. So, with, this is the rate study timeline, and I just wanted to make a quick comment that there has been a revision on the item that we provided with the staff report and the item that we are, the timeline that we are showing here today. Most rate studies are approved by resolution, however, our city approves their water rates via an ordinance, so you can see that at the bottom, we have made the adjustments for bringing the rate study as a form of a public hearing and an introduction of the ordinance and having, making time for, for scheduling a second reading of that ordinance. So, with that said, we are targeting to have a rate study come and be fully implemented if approved by our council on the June bill. If that is the case, we're looking at having council packets for you to review draft rate study at the end of March with a tentative presentation and the approval, receiving approval from the council for city staff and our consultants to send out the notices and to start a Proposition 218 notifying our residents of the draft and what we're proposing as far as new rates. We would be mailing out those notices no later than April 16, and as of, we did this last year, we conducted public workshops, we conducted a public workshop in English, Spanish, and we also conducted one in Punjabi. So, we're targeting those workshops to take place in late April with a final packet due to council by the end of May and potentially having this public hearing with the introduction of an ordinance on our first meeting scheduled for June 1st. And if that is, if that goes through, we would have a second reading if passed on the 15th of June, and normally, our bills are compiled at the end of the month, so that would, that would make room for us to be able to apply any, any rates or new rates in our June's bill. So, this is the item that we want to share, it is a roadmap, so that way, we will have, we will have some guidance on what we are looking at with this project that we're working on.
To add a little more information to this, council, there, add a little more urgency to this, as you know, we, there's, there's several projects that are in your five-year capital outline that specifically ties to a lot of the infrastructure in town, and so, one, we're supposed to maintain a 1.25 coverage in our reserves as it relates to our enterprise funds, because we have some bonding there, and then, two, we also have about, we're currently about 250 residents that have at least more than, I think, 60 to 90-day?
Late, late bill, outstanding bill.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do, outstanding bill, and so, because we haven't shut anybody off, you know, based on the directive of the council, so those are things that we're going to have to look at, we don't have to wait until then to act on those, but we want to at least bring those to your attention, and then ultimately- And then ultimately, we, we also have some, some future funding that we would like to go after that, that will make it difficult for us to qualify for low-interest loans moving forward unless we address some of these issues. So, so there's some, a lot more urgency now, and so we just wanted to share that with council.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions? Council member Moran? Council member Soto?
So what kind of a drastic impact are we looking at? I just heard Mr. Ramirez state that there are over 250 residents with, with revenues not coming into the city on top of us missing all the 2019 projections for the rates. So we didn't get any of that money this past year, and we are looking at something that's going to occur in June. I, I know you've, you, you're trying to do the recalculation, but those numbers are going to be outstanding.
Right now, we have about $30,000 of outstanding invoices between 60 and 90 days past due. That is something that we could address rather shortly than waiting for any of our, like, rate study implementation to take place because that was one, it, it was a directive from the council to put a moratorium during this pandemic for our, we have a moratorium on late fee, I'm sorry, not late fees, but disconnections, shot offs, and, and any kind of intent to go after and, and try to shut off any of this residents that have a, that have a, an extended outstanding balance. We, our office is constantly, just because they have an outstanding balance and they're, they're not getting shut off, that doesn't mean that we don't, we're not doing our due diligence to try to collect. But for many of those residents, it's, 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 it's become very difficult and they haven't been able to recover. But, but at the same time, it is still a, a collection or an item that we are seeking payment from because at the end of the day, there's still water that has been used and those are water charges that we need payment.
And one of the things that we've been doing also, council member, councilwoman Soto, is that, that's one of the reasons why we applied for some of these grants through some of our partners. And so we have, if they qualify, they can actually get assistance to pay for not only mortgage, but also the utilities. So you've, you'll see on our social media platforms and on our website that any, if there's anybody out there, any of the residents who might be in a predicament where they can't make their payments and they need assistance, they can contact self-help or through our office. And if they qualify, they can certainly pay down their utility bills.
That is correct. And then on the other side, we have the, the projects, the capital improvement projects that, they're on hold until we have some sort of resolution in order for us to be able to say the, with certainty that we're going to be able to have the money in the future in order to do the projects. There is a list that has been presented and it's still on hold. I believe there's many wells that, that need either repair or upgrades or expansions. And those are all projects that were, they're, they're pending, they're needed, but they're pending until we have a resolution with this rate study.
Any other questions? Mayor Potem Garcia, any questions?
Negative.
And for me, thank you, I appreciate it. I really wanted just to start having that thought process going and discussion and so council could, you know, get ready for what's going to be implemented or not. And a very important issue that's going to be brought to our, our council to, to make that decision. So it was very important that we started thinking about it. So thank you for bringing that.
One other last comment, mayor, on this. Of course, the utility stakeholder is part of this, and it's not mentioned in here. But yeah, we'll be having meetings shortly on all this because there's a lot of direct impact.
Thank you. I think there's one being scheduled here.
So, yeah, so actually, we have one scheduled for this Thursday, but it's been canceled. We're gonna have, we're, we're talking to, because let me just step back real quick. Even though we don't have anything right now specifically through Catherine Hansford and the Art Rate Consultant, there's several other things that we're working on to try to have a positive impact to lower our rates. So what we've done on the water side and on the general fund side, you know, that's why we implemented a lot of the upgrades, you know, and trying to save energy and, and efficiencies. And so that's, that's having a great positive impact on our, our water rates. So the wastewater side, the proposals that we had received in, in the past through, especially through train, the ROI, which is a return on investment, wasn't really what we were looking for. So we opted not to go with them on the wastewater side. So then we had proposals from others, we've analyzed those, and so we have a recommendation that the folks that are going to be presenting and bringing everybody up to speed, they need a little bit more time. So we canceled for this Thursday, but shortly we will start up and that will have, if we can get to somewhere that's very good for us, then we'll have something that's going to impact these rates, but on the positive side to lower the rates.
Thank you. I'm going to open that up to the public, public have any questions? Public, do you have any questions?
Diego Castillo, just a quick question, I don't know if it'd be finance or maybe the city manager can maybe just let the public know or the other council members know what the, what could happen if you guys don't meet the one and a quarter debt service. We're familiar with it on the commercial side, but if you can let them know, like, let's say if you guys get under the one and a quarter debt service, what is that, what implications is there?
That is a covenant from our bonds, our fin, the financial institution that let, let us borrow money. And not meeting that debt service ratio, it is something that it would put us, not on default of the payment, but on default of the covenant. We would need to remedy and we would need to do something in order to be able to meet that requirement. And at the same time, it will impact the ability for the city in order to borrow again with any other agency if we were able, if we were, if we were out there, you know, like going for a big project that we needed lending, we, we would not be able to do, do so.
Thank you, excellent question. Anybody else from the public on the phone? Any questions regarding this item? I think I hear none, so thank you very much for the presentation. We're moving on to item number eight, which is a discussion and appointment of two council members to the tax sharing agreement ad hoc committee. City manager, you want to talk a little bit about this one?
Yeah. So as it relates to, I, I kind of mentioned a little bit about this in the past, but, so we have a tax sharing agreement. All the municipalities within Merced County have some type of tax sharing agreement with the county. And the city of Livingston is no exception. We're the only ones that are holding out and, for good reason. And so we, we need to start up these conversations again with the county. The, what has been brought forward or suggested to us to adopt has not really been in alignment with what we're looking for. So now it's time to start that negotiation process again. The tax sharing agreement is very important in many aspects and it, and it has, it could have long, long lasting impact on the city. Just to give you a, a perspective, in order to generate just about $70,000 of funding for the city, we have to sell about 100, there has to be sales here in Livingston of about 140 million just for us to get $70,000. So giving that up would be very detrimental for us because we already used those $70,000 for our overall budget. Number two, the, the tax sharing agreement is very important because unless we have a tax sharing agreement in place, as the city looks at annexing more property, you know, we can't really do anything unless we have a tax sharing agreement in place. So this item is before council so that we can look at putting two council members along with staff as, as part of the negotiation committee with the county and try to bring forward something that is reasonable for both sides. That's the only way that a, a, an agreement can happen, and that's what MOU is. And when it's one-sided, it's not good. So anyways, with that, council?
Thank you. What's that? Thank you for bringing that up, or having this on the agenda for discussion. Obviously, this is a very important item and for us to consider and start negotiation or start the conversations once again with the county, like you mentioned, is very important. And I will open that up for discussion or if the council has any questions. Council member Moran, do you have any questions or comments or ideas?
Yeah, well, I, I do have a question for Mr. Ramirez, since I'm the new guy here. What kind of, for this, for this committee is there? I mean, thinking about the negotiations and understanding data and tax revenue and numbers, and I'm sure it's not going to be an easy task. What kind of experience should we have in advance to consider, you know, to be able to have that previous, you know, especially if we have previous knowledge about some of the experience needed for something like this?
Mr. Moran, I think, you know, it's, it's very, it would be very uncommon for there to be, you know, elected officials that would really, unless they're part of this realm, to really be super up to par on tax sharing agreements because this is a, a very complex. So that's where staff comes in and we work together and we provide you with all of the detail and try to explain it as much as we can in layman terms and then provide you with recommendations. So what we really need is two individuals of the council that can be engaged, that can participate, you know, as the meetings progress over time. And then once we get to a, a point where we know exactly what we want and how we want to advocate, then, and you guys know the concept, then, then we can bring it to council and try to educate the public and the council and as a whole and keep them abreast of all of this stuff. And then work with the, you know, then push to have the county, you know, come to the table and, and orchestrate something that's beneficial to both sides.
Okay, thank you. Well, in addition to that, just if we get a chance, I would like to volunteer once, I'll leave it up to your consideration, but you know, I'd like to volunteer as one of the council members on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Soto, any questions, comments? Mayor Potem Garcia, do you have any questions or comments or ideas?
Negative.
And regards to myself, so I know that if, you know, we are trying to, or in the past, there has been some concerns about county employees not participating in, at the part of the ad hoc committee. I think that had been the recommendation last time we attempted to negotiate. I know our mayor Potem Garcia is a county employee. Jose, you work for the county office of education or school district, is different, it's not the county, not, doesn't fall under the county, correct?
I don't believe it falls under the county. I do work for the high school district.
Okay.
But it is my understanding that.
It's under umbrella, okay, that's probably gonna, gonna have to probably get clarification, Trevor?
I think it, it's something we would probably need to look into, but if we wanted to form the ad hoc committee at this time, I think we could evaluate, you know, who you'd like to appoint and figure out whether, if there is a conflict or not.
Okay. And then for myself too, being associated with the fire department, I mean, I would love to volunteer as well. But I think we need just clarification for, or, you know, make sure that we're, we're on the good. So maybe if you could evaluate or find out for us and, and then go from there.
I mean, if you wanted to make the, the nominations to form the committee, we, you know, there's no conflict there. So we, you know, my recommendation would be that, do that tonight, and then we can do our evaluation after that, that decision has been made.
Perfect. Then councilman Moran and myself, I believe, volunteered for the ad hoc committee. Is that okay with everybody? Mayor Potem Garcia, you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then, so that's the ad hoc committee. The, I agree with our city manager, it's, you know, it's, there's a lot to it, there's a lot on information, details. So definitely it's important that we get together, have a meeting and discussion and, and break it down because it's a lot. And also like in general for the rest of the council to be educated on that, maybe later on, have a information session or whatever, as a presentation perhaps, so everybody could, can understand what, what we're dealing with here. But then in our city attorney's office, we'll get back to us in regards to make sure that there is no conflict for us to participate. But I do. And regards to, okay, to just, before we move forward, do we have any public comment regarding this item? Okay, I hear none. Let's move on to the next item, which is discussion and direction on the possibility of reopening the city parks given that the state has lifted the stay-at-home order. And I was, I asked to have this item placed on the agenda. I've had a lot of definitely telephone calls, a lot of people reaching out in regards to having more access to our parks. Obviously, the state, the, the state has lifted the stay-at-home order. I believe that, you know, still people were, a lot of people were still accessing our parks to go on walks and stuff like that. And I think we've been okay with, with, with that, but I think a lot of people don't know as well that, you know, they're able to take a walk at the park. I know like, for example, a sports complex is, has that plastic fence around. So I wanted to bring this to council, have a discussion, see if, you know, we want to make sure we kind of let the public know they have access to, to, to walk around or to how, how far do we want to open up the parks? Want to open the playgrounds, we want to allow practicing, whatever the case may be, and just hear what the other council members have to say and, and staff as well. Council member Jose Moran, do you have any comments on this or ideas?
Yes, I think it's, it's very beneficial to have everyone be out and have the opportunity to go for a walk and, you know, eventually play some sports. And I, I see that every day with my students, you know, the need to have them participate in sports. My own kids at home, you know, the kids in the neighborhood. You know, just, just having the opportunity to be out and about and, and, and I think it is, it's very important. And also in those conversations, I, you know, I, I hear it every, you know, a couple of times a week having conversations with other, other educators on, on, on how much COVID, COVID is affecting, you know, everyone in the population, adults, you know, all ages, kids. So I do believe it is very important, but my only concern is the timing, the timing to try and do this and, and open it up completely or, you know, or, or considering different stages of opening it up. As an educator, you know, I did have some conversations with some other educators that reached out to me, including some teachers, you know, besides community members, also including a, one school administrator from an elementary. including a, one school administrator from an elementary and Mr. Samora, superintendent for the Livingston Union School District. So I see both sides. I see the benefits, but I also see the possible consequences. You know, I think that everyone has been doing an extreme great job as far as trying to do our best, even at our school, at the high school, we don't even have half of the staff, the staff members on our side just to try to assist and not have that exposure with too many people on our schools, even though we don't have kids attending schools yet. I see the need. I see my kids every day, you know, every day of the week. And I not only have to be an educator, I have to be a psychologist, I have to be, you know, I have to wear like 10 different hats to be able to be supportive of our, of our students. We do, we just recently this week were able to have our students or some of our students participate in some training, some exercises and come to our school site, but with certain restrictions. And just thinking about, you know, how much can we do? How much can we really do out in the community? And that would go against what educators are currently doing. And like seeing that, like, we're so close, we're actually planning, like, our school, the high school is planning to go back into, into in person on the, on March 15. I mean, it's, it's, we're only a month or so away, but it's so far, but it's so close. We've been through this for a whole, over a year. So it's, I'm just looking at the timing. How can this affect, you know, how much we do in the city can affect the work that our other partners in the community are doing. You know, yes, maybe the older kids, the adults would have more precautions as far as maintaining a distance, you know, whatever, all of the other requirements. But, you know, I'm thinking of the younger ones, the elementary kids that are gonna want to go and get on the, on the playgrounds and, you know, they're not gonna, I seen them play, they're not gonna keep their six feet apart distance, they're not gonna, is this sanitized, is it not? You know, at our schools, we have to, you know, that's what we do every day, all day long, to actually help and prevent from this getting out of hand right now. And actually, just by looking at the numbers for our county, at one time, not so long ago, we were at like 78, 80 cases per day, I think it was. And we're doing good. We're heading, we're going, you know, we're going down, we're decreasing. As of this, as of today, from like 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, this is the report from today, we're down to 47.2 cases. That means that the work that the county is doing, that the school districts, that the cities are doing, is heading in the right direction. So how much can we do? How much do we want to do that might affect those numbers? You know, and actually, the 30% positive rate that Leslie shared earlier today, I was, you know, I wasn't aware of that, but that's high, that's, that is very high. And then even if we do, and, you know, unless we don't follow the CDC guidelines or the county guidelines or the California Department of Health guidelines, you know, they're all looking at six feet apart, you know, carefully considering, you know, certain playgrounds. Mr. Samora's lengthy email had other concerns that if we, as a city, if we do open up, you know, quote unquote, open up our parks, community members might think that, you know, their facilities are also open, then they're going to get in there and then they, you know. So everything that they're doing will be kind of, you know, what we end up doing is going to be counterproductive to what they're doing. They have certain plans for their elementaries to, to, you know, have certain age groups and cohorts. Right now, they're actually going slower because of some other, you know, some cases. So even though they have plans and they've been planning this for many months, you know, they have some setbacks. So I, I think we're all going through the same thing. I don't think certain part of the population, I don't think my neighbors are going through any different than some other neighbors on the other side of town. I think we're all going through the same thing as adults, as kids. So I think it is very important to look at all the facts and to kind of consider how well we're doing with those numbers going down and to also consider, you know, that we're so close. And can we just wait, can we bring this back in another month or month and a half and consider those numbers? Because, you know, in trying to stake, in trying to take one step forward, we might end up taking two or three steps back and it will be very unfortunate. I do want my kids back in the classroom. They need to be in the classroom soon, you know? And I'm sure everyone, you know, feels the same way. So I'm all for it, but how much can we, you know, do we want to do? How fast? You know? So we got to be very cautious. And I think up to a certain point, I don't know how much of a communication our city manager has had with our school districts to have that, you know, certain understanding of the struggles that they're going through. So I do want, I hope, I mean, I, you know, I'm glad that some of them reached out and I wanted it to be educated as much as possible for this item and like for all the other items. You know, I do, I do now see those, now I know what you guys are talking about when you guys say sleepless nights, nights because of all the research and you guys got to do, and I understand. So, but I'm all for it, but how much is, will be too much? Can we wait another six months, six weeks and reconsider this? So.
Just to answer to Mr. Moran's question about us working with the school districts, we have a really great working relationship with the school districts, especially with Livingston Unified School District, to the point where we were one of the first that had those backpacks, the disinfectant backpacks to disinfect. And we, you know, we assisted them and we have constant communication with them related to COVID or non-COVID related. And one of the things that we were talking about is that if, you know, the liability, if we were to, because in order to open up, let's say, the play structures at the park, we have to follow really strict guidelines that the state actually provided. And so we would be on the hook to go over there and constantly clean that. And so, you know, those are things that we can do, but it's a, it's a policy decision by council whether or not you want to do that and direct resources to do that. And so, again, I just wanted to share that so that the liability aspect was on the table and of course, our legal counsel can certainly chime in on any of that.
Councilmember Soto, questions, comments, ideas? What's your preference or suggestion? What would you like to see?
If you're going to ask me straight out about what we're going to do at our parks, I say open them. But again, looking towards what types of resources and availability that we have amongst our city staff to maintain the parks the way that we should, again, that's an expense for our city. Some good points brought out by councilmember Moran, but opening our parks, and I don't know exactly what you're meaning, what, how you wanted to frame that, is reopen our parks is, is the playground usage or because the parks are open, just the walkways and sidewalks, exercising? So when you say reopen our parks, I think we need to be more specific with what, how we're going to do that. If it's playground equipment, and I know for sure it probably wouldn't be the, we can't be renting anything out. So parks are open to an extent. I believe we've been doing that one step forward, three steps back dance since, you know, about a year. So putting dates on these items here are almost arbitrary because, again, it's, we're being held back by many factors, health, our numbers, state, however you want to look at that. But reopening our parks, I, again, I just need to ask, what were you thinking? What, how are you, how did you envision that?
I envisioned it to have a discussion like we're doing right now, to come up with an idea of what we want to do moving forward, because I've received a lot of requests from the public to open up the parks. So that's, that was what I was envisioning. I know, for example, the sports complex is fenced up, so it's not necessarily opened or accessible by anybody, correct? So not, we're not really open to what we say we are in some parks. So that's the discussion I wanted to have. If we're gonna allow access to people play or walk with their kids, then we need to bring those plastic barriers off, allow the parking at certain parks because parking is not accessible. So, for example, Gallo Park, right, is the barriers are up?
Yeah, all our parking lots are still closed right now along with the rest of them.
So if we are going to say that people could go walk or whatever, so we need to open up those parking lots so people could go park and go on their walks. In regards to the playground areas, till when did we, where we're sanitizing, remember when we stopped sanitizing the park playgrounds?
Yes, so mayor, let me just provide a little bit more information. So from the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, there has been different categories, colors, you know, they come up with the color code. So we're still under purple, under widespread, even though the, the stay-at-home order was modified. And the park has always been accessible to the public for walking, doing some exercises as long as they put in place their proper protocols, guidelines by the CDC and the state and the local health department. The only thing that has changed has been the color coding. And so as the color coding goes up, we've made modifications. And so now that, even though we're still in the purple, you know, they're, they allow outdoor dining, so we can begin to open up the parking lots. But during the, during the different stages, it, the park has always been available to the public. Where we stopped sanitizing the play structures and all that is when we had the new guidelines that came forward from the state and the actual sanitizing requirements. I don't know if you want to add some detail?
Yeah, so we still, staff has noticed that we still have community members, residents there.
Yeah, so staff has noticed that residents still have been using the parks, the patios, walking, sitting. So staff has still, at least on a weekly basis, been disinfecting the patios and the shelter areas. Playground equipment is still closed off, but staff has been weekly disinfecting some areas.
So clarification, I was specifically referring to the play structures, but everything else still continues to be sanitized? Yeah, elaborate a little bit on the play structures so that everybody knows.
Yeah, play structures are still not, not in use right now. They are, most of them are fenced off with our construction fencing, the orange fencing, where we can. Can't stop all the kids, they're still at the playground, you know, kids are still trying to, still trying to play. But we do have them fenced off.
Signage.
Signage out there as well. But bathrooms are closed right now and there is no access for the public to park at the parks that do have a parking lot at this time.
Thank you, Anthony. So obviously, I know that there's challenges with the bathrooms, so, I mean, you know, and I know that, you know, we'll take staff time and effort to maintain those playgrounds to whatever level we need to have them at, but at least somehow communicate out that parks are still accessible. I would say take those barriers down from the sports complex. If we're saying that they're accessible, then let's make them accessible and not fenced. Allow parking at the parks so people could go and go on walks or whatever. In regards to like organized sports, like practices, I've actually seen a couple of soccer teams practicing even, you know, weeks ago, whatever. So, I mean, I don't condone or I wouldn't say like, let's open it up for organized practices, but, I mean, seeing a family, a same household playing or whatever, I mean, it, I wouldn't, you know, discourage that, you know? Actually, we're encouraged to, for a household to go out and spend time out in the park. So that's kind of what I would like to see or what I kind of wanted to discuss. And obviously, I brought this to have this discussion for transparency for our public and so people know what we're thinking and what we're wanting to do. So, and I never had the intention to like open up like the playgrounds. I know that's a challenge, obviously, but at least making sure that people are aware, make it really accessible. But I don't know what else, I don't know what council thinks or thinks about that. Councilmember. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Roe. Mayor Pretem.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you on the barriers for the sports complex. I don't see why we're any different than Gallo, that doesn't have any barriers all the way around. So I just say we need to open that up and people want to use the field. I mean, they could do their part, they want to keep their distance, I mean, basketball courts or whatnot, but the sports complex is pretty big on this side of town. That's where people use the field to either walk around by the trees or whatnot. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Moran, any other opinion, thoughts or suggestions, direction?
Yes, well, you know, like I said, I just wanted to raise the data, you know, I'm in favor of doing something for the community and finding ways, I guess, being strategic. I think that I can agree with removing the barriers for people to park at the, you know, because people are still attending the parks. So, and they end up parking on the, on the side streets or on the neighborhoods and stuff like that. So I think it only makes sense to be able to open up the parking areas for people to park because they're already attending anyways. And I don't think any of us has ever really intended to not have people go out there. You know, we have a lot of open space and they can walk and, you know, run and, which is great, you know? But I don't feel comfortable encouraging, you know, doing more than that to encourage teams or large groups of residents, you know, either kids and adults, I've seen them play, you know, to go out into the softball fields, you know, because it's open, it's like, oh, I guess that means, you know, even if we might post signage, you know, we already know that signage is not going to hold them back. To them, if it's, if the fencing, that orange fencing is down on the softball fields, to them, it's open and they can play. You know, that is just normally what happens. Even at the high schools, I mean, they have a fence, six, seven foot high fence, and on Sundays, I still see, we still see 20 or 30 people playing out there. And illegally, they're jumping the fence because they don't have, it's, it's closed for a reason. The gates are locked for a reason, but they still jump the fence, you know? But, I mean, I think signage does help. I mean, we're just checking off the mark, you know, it's like, oh, we added those signages, but, you know, to the people when they want to do something doesn't mean anything. So I think I do agree with considering opening the parking lots for people to park, go out there for a walk. I mean, they're still walking out there, so just make it more accessible. Thank you.
You had, you had another comment or?
Yeah, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to also mention, while you guys are having this discussion about opening the parking lot area, more people, residents to come and park. Right now, my staff is having an issue with the restrooms being closed right now. There's a lot of urine and feces that are, they're having to clean up. Because, especially at the Max Foster Sports Complex, all around the outside and the side of the bathrooms. And they're urinating outside because that, the bathrooms aren't open. Want to keep that in consideration as well.
Absolutely, that's good information to know, because I wasn't aware of that. So that's definitely something else to consider. I know that'll be, so Anthony, for your staff, what would be a better, I guess, solution? Or would be a better to have the bathrooms actually?
I wanted to ask a question to legal on this. Because, you know, of course, we would love to open up the restrooms. That's why we built them, that's why we have them there. But in terms of the liability side of things, if we were to open up the restrooms, what is the dynamics there, Trevor? You know, would we, I mean, anybody can sue us for anything, but in terms of, you know, high probabilities?
Absolutely, I, you know, I think if the city were to decide to open the bathrooms in the parks, we would need to ensure that we're following the highest level of guidelines from both the CDC, as well as the State Department of Health in regards to what their protocols are for cleaning and disinfecting. And I know they are quite rigorous from my previous review of them. In regards to liability, it's hard to gauge based on, you know, where we end up as far as the final decision point. But that would be the starting point as far as what the city would be required to do. And then also, you know, the hours in which you keep them open are also part of that discussion. But it would, their minimum would be ensuring we're complying with the CDC and State Department of Health guidelines.
Thank you, Trevor. I guess it'll be, I mean, it'll be another discussion in regards to, you know, what's more beneficial for staff to have the bathrooms actually opened and, and just keep them to that level? Or, you know, keep on cleaning outside the restrooms, the waste, you know? So it's really, you know, what your staff probably rather keep the bathrooms open and, you know, upkeep them to that level, I don't know.
Yeah, but at the same time, if we're going to have to comply with rigorous cleaning, we're going to be short manpower as well. So we got to keep that in consideration as well.
So that's definitely, you know, the pros and cons there. Definitely something to consider, Jose, and continue having those discussions.
Yeah, we do have our mid-year budget coming, Mayor, and depending on the resources and the needs and, you know, there's going to be a lot more other needs. And there can be more analysis there, and you guys can decide where to move some, some funding and priorities.
Definitely. Councilmember Soto?
Who maintains that porta potty over there at the Court Plaza?
That is our contractor, AAA Portable. We rent it from them, so they're responsible for weekly cleaning.
So that's available to the public?
That's open to the public, yes. You're talking about the porta potty at the courthouse, you said?
The Court Plaza, right here?
Yeah.
Across the street?
Yep, it's open to the public. And AAA Portable services those on a weekly basis.
And the city holds the contract?
Yes.
So for me, we're spending that money for, I mean, I don't know how many porta potties that we use. We used to have a few around town that we had contracted at some of the parks. You know, Sing Park had one, there are a few over there at Joseph Gallo. If we have some porta potties open, yet we don't have others, it's that same thing where we, we open up some of the parks, but not all of them. So now we're discussing that we should, because all the parks essentially were open. But now we're discussing that parking wasn't available, we had the yellow, the orange fencing around it. So now let's open all the parks. Now we have porta potties at some parks that are open to the public, yet we don't have a facility that we can open up, such as the one at Memorial Park, to the public. That makes no sense to me. But what does make sense is that we have our staff that is out there cleaning up after our residents or maybe even visitors to Livingston, because they're using the outside facilities, because the inside facilities aren't available to them. You're still putting in the work and their restrooms. So I am, I'm assuming you're vigorously cleaning them anyways?
Yes, around the outside.
Around the outside, so take that on the inside. Open up the restrooms on the inside and clean them on the inside. And that's just my opinion, but I'm, I'm looking at that as, we have parks open, we open all of them. We have some porta potties available to our public. Why aren't we using our restrooms that we already have, the facilities that we have? Our manpower is already being out there, being used. If, if our public's going out to Max Foster, getting in through our fencing, using the restrooms, but they're not actually using the restrooms, they're using the perimeter around the restroom. Again, looking at some health issues and just the uncleanliness of it. And I know that, that for me is already no good. So that's where I am with that.
Those are excellent points you bring up, because you're right. You know, technically, those porta potties, you know, we hold the contract, so technically we'll be liable, and they're being used and open. So excellent points, because in one, one way, we have them open, we have certain bathrooms open, and in other areas, we don't. And people are still using them outside, but, you know. So there's a lot of things to consider here. Ultimately, the, the item is to speak regarding the openness of the parks. You know, we need to, we do need to figure out regarding the restrooms, because it's, you know, Councilmember Soto has great points, and we have to figure that out, and pros and cons in regards to opening them or not. And, you know, that's also a health issue, like you mentioned. People using the restroom and waste outside. And people are going to be accessing the parks to walk or whatever. That's a health issue and liability for the city as well. So we need to really consider the different pros and cons there. But in regards to the parks, we're saying that they're accessible for people to walk and all of that. So we just need to make sure we make them accessible with the parking lots, bring down the fence of the sports complex. And then, like we said, obviously, the playgrounds will be too difficult at this moment to open them up. And then, so that, we, we, obviously, we'll talk about that at some later point as hopefully, numbers go down and as the, our purple tier hopefully, you know, changes color. And then, and then, you know, just keep us posted or bring it back for discussion in regards to the restrooms. And obviously, use your best judgment, Jose.
Yeah, actually, you know, this is great, all the great conversation and that's been taking place. And I think based on all the information that has been shared tonight, you know, and weighing the pros and cons and the fact that, you know, what's happening outside and manpower and stuff. And it's my opinion that we need to move forward and open the restrooms up. Maybe we limit the hours, but try to, you know, find the best use of hours when the public is using the restrooms, so we can clean. So we'll catch up and we'll come up with a game plan. But I, I don't see an easy solution to this, other than opening up the restrooms, because what's currently happening is, I would say, more detrimental and more liable. So at that point, I would say we, we'll find a way to open the restrooms up. Might have to modify the hours, but we'll open them up.
Thank you, everybody. Great discussion. Let's move on to item number 10, discussion and direction pursuing a sister city relationship with Churincho Michoacan, Mexico. Also asked to have this item on the agenda for tonight. I know we had several discussions in the past couple of years, few years, actually, in regards of our sister city program in general. I know in the past, we have been sister cities with other Mexican cities, Japanese cities. I think Jose only had those two countries, right? You know, it's, it's a great opportunity to just have a relationship with a different country in regards to economic development, ideas, support, resources. The reason specifically it came down to this city is because there's, you know, first, second, third generation of our residents from this specific area of Mexico reside here in our town. There's, you know, like I said, a large population. You know, a lot of people still go back, still have some family over there. So, so that's why I wanted to bring it up to consideration. The President Municipal has actually been here in Livingston several times. We have an opportunity to talk with them. So I would like for the council to consider and hopefully give direction to move on with our, our sister city program. And not only, you know, this could be the beginning of, of, you know, of the program. I know the Japanese community and also they have approached us, Jose, I think at one point, for, for a sister city program with them. So that could be, this could be the beginning of, you know, establishing a solid program like we did in the past. So I'm gonna see what council, any suggestions, questions? Jose, you want to add anything else in regards to the actual program? I know you participated in the past when you were here with other cities.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. So, yeah, so if council was to provide direction on this, you know, there is two chapters of, you know, sister city associations. And, you know, we can make it really formal, or we can make it informal. I know that the last one that the council did was, was semi-formal. And it was just, you know, a certificate and then some plaques, and then I know they visit each other. And so it all depends on what level. And, and then depending on what level, you know, of course, staff will work towards that effort.
Thank you, Jose. Council, Councilmember Jose Moran, any questions or anything?
Muchas gracias, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So, I mean, I think programs like this are very important, you know, in creating partnerships with, not only with other entities in other countries that represent the different parts of our community. And I think they're very important. And I, I'm not very knowledgeable when it comes to this particular program. I mean, other than what you, what you guys have mentioned, you know, like visiting each other and, and getting, I guess, getting to know more of those communities. What other benefits come from, you know, programs like this to their community and to our communities here? Is it just, you know, kind of visiting each other and having an opportunity to come over and kind of see what we're doing? Or are there any like business opportunities that we can benefit from? Or, I don't know.
Let me just share just a teensy bit in broad, in general. What has, it really covers the full gamut. So for instance, there can be cultural exchanges, there can be school, you know, exchanges. There can be business, you know, economic development going back and forth. It just depends on how much each side wants to put towards it. You know, some start out really well in the first year, second year. And then as time goes by, it might, you know, die off a little bit. And then another group comes in and then shoots up. So there has to be some, what's, I think one of the differences here is that you have a lot of people that live here who are tied to this specific community. So I don't know if that's going to, you know, die out. And, but it, but it all depends, and it can be, and also, it can be just symbolic. It just depends on what level you guys want. And like I said, staff will, will do the, as best we can to help facilitate that, whether you do something more symbolic, or just once in a while, or if you really want to get engaged. Other things that, when you have sister cities, many times, you know, there's, there's also like donations of equipment that, you know, because of the strict guidelines that the state of California currently has, you might donate equipment or vehicles or whatever, you know, that way. And then they typically, you know, sometimes sponsor things over here. So it's, it's just, it's really, it's really different in every community, but those are some of the possibilities.
Thank you, Jose. Councilman, or Moran, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Soto? Mayor Pretzam Garcia? Mayor Pretzam Garcia? Just to go back to, Mayor Pretzam Garcia, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yeah, negative.
Okay, just to go back to both of you, Councilmember Soto, are you guys are in favor of supporting this or not interested, anything? Or just?
I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Mayor Pretzam Garcia.
I would be in favor of supporting something such as this, so that, that we have the relationships and just being able to communicate back and forth amongst our residents and, you know, fellow, just creating a bond, I guess.
Thank you, appreciate it. So I'm gonna open up to the public. Do we have any comments? One at a time, please. Thank you.
Diego Castillo? Yeah, to answer some of your questions, the idea for the sister city, we don't know the exact percentage, but there's a high percentage of the population here are native to that region. So it's more to have an open communication between the city of Livingston and the jurisdiction down there with the government. With, let's say, somebody passes away here and they want to send him to Mexico, kind of have an open line of communication to make certain services available, so.
Thank you, sir. Are you in support of this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, yeah, just to summarize, obviously, there's a lot of benefits. Like we mentioned, you know, obviously establishing that relationship economically, culturally, personally. As mentioned, there's a large population of people native to that area. They are, I don't, like Diego mentioned, there's a, I don't know what percentage, but there's a lot of people from there, first, second, third generation, still have ties to that area. And that's actually been some request for some time that as the people have seen that we've been sister cities with other, other cities, that well, how come we can't be a sister city with that specific jurisdiction? Because there's a lot of people from there. So just from talking to the public out there, there'll be a lot of support and a lot of, you know, be welcoming. And just to recognize our, you know, what Livingston, the makeup of Livingston, you know, our culture. So I think it'd be a good thing. So in regards to direction, it sounds like everybody's in favor of it. So I would ask staff to move forward with, maybe just look into what does those two organizations entail in regards to how we could go about, you know, moving forward and then just making it a formal thing and making it happen. And we'll definitely reach out to el presidente municipal. Is he coming, Diego, you know, if he's coming anytime soon?
Three or four months, yes.
Okay, so maybe when he comes down, we could, you know, make some kind of formal, you know, resolution or whatever the case may be, and then just go from there. But I will definitely reach out to him if, once we get more information. So thank you, council, or thanks to you, I think Jose. So moving on to our section regarding council direction on future agenda items. Actually, I have a couple that I would like to bring up for discussion to our next council meeting. I have a few ones and, or a couple. One, one thing that I wanted to, obviously, we had discussions in the past, and I know with the recommission as well, regarding a pet or a dog park. So I wanted to establish ad hoc committee if, or have that discussion if we could appoint an ad hoc committee for a pet or a dog park. I know there's been different ideas, suggestions, and maybe in collaboration with the recommission, to move that forward. And what's the feasibility of actually having a dog park here? I know Jose, our city manager, I think at one point, we, we identified or possibly an idea next to Yamato, that open area back there. That could be a possibility, I mean, whatever the case, ad hoc committee could come up with ideas and how to finance that and. ideas and how to finance that and, but just to get, get things going and, and I know that's a big interest from the community. So if we could put that on our agenda, if everybody's in agreement with that? Yes? Mayor Pretzam Garcia, you're good with that?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And then another one. Also have a, I don't know, informational session or discussion regarding the impact fees. I know for a few years, we had talked about how impact fees are, what percentage goes to what, how we could change that, how we could allocate more of those impact fees to a certain department, all that stuff. So I think just, I know we haven't had much discussion about that in the past couple of years and I know there's new council members. So we could fine tune about how we want to put it on there, but definitely would like to have a discussion regarding that and potentially even changing what percentage goes to what. I know we talked about that in the past. So, and also the Community Development Block grant, I think it goes with that too. At least have the council familiarized with what that is and priorities when, when going after that. And I think that's it. Council, do we have anything else that you guys would like to discuss or talk about? Councilmember Moran?
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, I do appreciate you taking the lead on the ad hoc committee for the dog park. I know that has been a desire in the community for, for a while, some, for a while now. Also, I wanted to bring to the council and then on a future, on a future agenda item, a Spain Udo program possibility. I know that some other cities are actually moving forward, actually they have already. And I just learned that Gustin, my other community where I grew up, they're ahead of the game, they actually beat us to it. They do have already a Spain Udo program and from, from what I hear is very successful. So, you know, and there's some other communities so, that we can get information from. So if you guys are okay with it, I would like to consider that's a Spain Udo program to be included in, in the agenda in the near future, possibly either the next one or in a month from now. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto, any items that you want? Mayor Pretzam Garcia, any items you want to discuss in the future?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have any, anything for future, however, when are our parks going to be opening up?
Yeah, hi there, Mayor Pretzam, this is city manager. So, so our parks will continue to be, we're going to take down the barricades, you know, starting tomorrow and then we're going to be opening up the park, the, the restrooms more than, more than likely tomorrow, the next day. We just need to have a huddle on how we're going to address the, the opening and the cleaning of the restrooms. But as far as taking down the barricades, those will happen tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Pretzam Garcia. So at this time, that is our end of our regular council meeting. We're going to still retire to our closed session at this time and we'll report back if there's any items to report. Thank you.